...along with Sharon, not together separately, they will all be with us this evening. I hope that Mrs. Pia should join us a little bit later. The idea tonight is we're going to run through all the board items that we'll be voting on next week. We'll also be getting a report this evening from the Jackson Wall Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to open up the floor to any comments from the public. When you pump forward, just give me your name and your address.
Good evening. Chris Bohm, 5 Rimby Way, parent of Candy Bohm, high school sophomore, and A. Bohm, sixth grader. I would like to bring up the topic of the block scheduling calendar in high school and how it might not be the most advantageous possible calendar to set our students up for success in the AP curriculum. There's some obvious reasons, I believe. I brought this up to the board as well as the administration already, and I do think it should be explored, looking at data internally and benchmarking against others to see if something better can't be done for our students and which is something that really is a pretty mere curriculum opportunity for our students. It's primarily made up of our college-going culture. Those students and the AP curriculum is designed to give those students the confidence that they can be successful in college. Just to challenge them, take courses that they're going to get college credit for, succeed, and give them the confidence to be able to do that. And I'm not sure, and I'm afraid that our calendar presently doesn't do that as well as it possibly could.
So, just have a couple of questions because I recall an email that came through. Do we know if our, do we believe, at least philosophically, if our block scheduling model maximizes student opportunity for success in AP courses and AP exams? Do we have a...
For all students, it does, we believe. Certainly for AP students, there's always room for growth, but we have an over eighty percent achievement rate.
And so, one of the things I think that we saw in the email also was this issue around if there was a difference in success rates between students who took it in the fall versus the spring. So, do we have data on that? Do we know if that is the case? Because I think, if I understand the email that I saw correctly, there is a different periods of time that students have in the fall versus...
Depending on the course, yes. And Mr. Panbub, are you in the audience? You were only given the figure that it's eighty-three percent, I believe?
Oh, it's for the AP US course. I don't know the others off the top of my head. And to Mr. Japine, we did not disaggravitate that to the individual student level for those fall and spring. I mean, it's possible to do that, we would have to pull that out for individual students to disaggravitate. It's a good question.
So, what is... Yeah, I'm not a teacher here, if you want to ask a teacher question.
Now, I just wanted to say that I would really like to see that data between the fall and the spring, and also all of the different AP classes that we offer, and the number of students that are in the classes who are actually taking the test versus the ones that are just taking the class. Is there a way to get all that data?
I do remember in the past when my children were in the schools, that was only about a few years ago, one of the advantages of block schedules, they could actually pile the AP courses they needed because they weren't going throughout the year. So, that was one of the advantages for how they did it, and they could actually go to more advanced topics, which was something they couldn't have done with year-long programs or some of the courses.
I want to say now, though, for example, in bio, they'll take, they have to take accelerated bio first and then take AP bio in the spring. So, they are taking two full credits of science in one year.
But otherwise, it would have been, you would have had one, one year, and then you would have another one to the second year. This way, you can pile together and you become much more sharp on the topic as you go through and you fill your knowledge base, so you can potentially be more successful. So, I guess there's an argument either side of the point, not that one child's, and it really comes down to the child's ability to grasp the subject sometimes. And I can see the possibility that if you're taking the course in the fall, that by the springtime, you may not be able to retain the materials as well as you may have otherwise.
And if you're taking it in the spring, you get somewhere around thirty hours of less instruction time for the class compared to the students in the fall. Pass rate, two years ago, was actually sixty-seven percent on AP exams, public knowledge on the school profile. And as for being able to take more AP classes, I work in a school that doesn't have block scheduling. My students take twelve, thirteen, fourteen AP courses. I'm not sure if students at Exeter take AP courses. So, it doesn't have, well, it doesn't have to be block scheduling. Now, I'm not saying it can't be block scheduling. I'm just saying, I believe in its present format, the AP, the block scheduling actually adversely impacts our top students in terms of the college-going students, in terms of their success on these exams, and also making the most out of the AP curriculum, which should build confidence and just want me to take on more rigor. It should get me excited about learning, and I think the speed in which we have to offer these courses and block scheduling and then students not being prepared for the exam properly actually makes them less confident, makes them less likely to take their next exam, and makes them not want to take rigor and just look at AP courses as being part of classes.
I would like to add to that, that when they take exams, they're taking an exam every four to five days on four to five chapters at a time.
My students, my children didn't have a problem. The children, they were in school at that time, didn't have a problem. They were able to get to very high-level schools, including Carnegie Mellon, Penn, and others. So, as I said, I just think it comes down to the students sometimes and their way to grasp the subject, but if we can look at data, we can see how that works out.
Hi, good evening. Vincent Danconi, thirty-six, five-liner, in the admin. I'm running the national supervisors and the school board liaison with Mike Japine. Just wanted to update you that we reached out by Mr. DeWalt and Steve Dibler from Riley Elementary, and we're working together, collaborating to help with their art show project. He came in, I had talked with Mr. Ranger, Will Rigger, and this is where he gets to work to help kids, our project to help visualize what they think perkinated would be, since we're doing all the construction and, you know, I'm sure we're going to get like swimming pools in the middle of the road, but it's cool because it's kind of, we're trying to bring them together to, and I talked to Mike about this, but I asked if I could just speak to it, that, you know, to bring them together, that we're working together and have the kids excited about what's going on and why it's happening in their neighborhood and things. Because they might not always understand, you know, why it would be trying to get rid of everything except like sex. So, I just wanted to bring an update to that. And I did also want to just say to Hunter, he just comes into town to me, and again, he is a resident, and I'm not saying anything that he said anything wrong in the, what he spoke at me, but the only thing I would actually disaddress is, he is a school board member, and, you know, he didn't say that, but it is even a paper. People know the same thing from me. I can go somewhere, I'm attached to everybody, and if you guys are school members, apologize. And we have had also good success from, you know, there you go, on social media, you know, actually defending us, which is nice, you know, I'm not going to waste anything, but should just say that, I know it certainly wasn't your intention, but some of the board and the administration might have felt that we were getting kicked while we're down. We are down with three members, we are getting new board members and trying to kind of reorganize and bring back, you know, like you get, we have the best interest of the township in mind going forward, you know, and I'm excited that we can keep continuing it, but, you know, if we have any questions in turn, like I'll go through Mike if I have any major concerns that I don't feel it's right for me, you know, I'm a parent, and just, I am attached to supervisor, it's all about perception. Thank you, guys. Thank you. I urge you, if you're in the district, I'm sure you can say that. Thanks, guys.
Everyone else, please, comments? Okay. At this point, I'd like to, as Dr. Schlopp was giving his presentation about Jackson Wall Elementary School.
Good evening. Jackson Wall Board Report, my official last report to the school board. Tonight, we have four, four girls who did absolutely a fantastic job with the Connects Project. Want me to turn this on?
Yeah, please.
Hello. Hello. We have four girls here who worked on the Connects Project. And it was a Collie White project where forty, forty-six teams of generally gifted students worked on creating something that had to move, they had to move an object six inches using levers and different things. And they developed a system as though they were in a moving hole. And they finished seventh in competition, and the competition was great. It's the first time I missed a competition. I talked to Mrs. Walker and said, you know, that one's coming up. She said, it was like three days ago, so they keep kidding me. So, it's always held at the BCIU, and it's something I look forward to because lots of brilliant projects out there. But we have Sophie Siemens is here, our fourth student. Sophie's here. Sophie's here. Sienna Kreider is here.
Hold on, let me come up. Go to the board team.
Sienna Kreider, good job, Sienna Kreider. Jillian Krady. There were no boys in this group. And Ariana Paul is covered. I don't know what happened to the boys, you know.
Picture first. Turn around, picture there, you see the board. All right. Come in here, sweetie. Come in. There you go. How are you doing? Tell me, tell me more about what you guys did.
So, these are private auto coal mining machinery to help coal miners put the coal out of the ground enough to the area they drop it off. And my cart had an elevator, and I was in charge of making it work. So, I would take a string and pull it down, and then a cart would come up, and it would knock down a claw that would then put it onto a conveyor belt. My cart was a conveyor belt, and I was in charge of using the motor and using the switch to turn it on and off and go backwards. And then it would jump off into a tiny clip or the rib that we put at the end of our conveyor belt. I was in charge of the ramp and the wagon, and we would get a piece of coal use around the, we would pretend it was coal, and it would jump into the wagon, and then we would go down. I was also in charge of helping build the elevator, and we had to make sure that everything would work and work together, and we had to solve out our problems and work together to finally find something that would work.
They did a super job, for sure. My report, that's in front of you, obviously, here. The green is obviously good, and the colors on the first page, blue is better. Those are all our statistics and how we did against the state and how we did overall for our PSSA proficiency last year in first, first block, first blocks in the top left being language arts, second being math, and third across science, where we feel comfortably above the state average. And the next set of blocks down shows our growth in P-VAS. Our students made, a hundred percent of our students made state growth, expected growth in ELA last year, which is, obviously can't be any better than that. Eighty-seven percent in mathematics and seventy-six percent all outstanding scores for our PSSA's last year. On the next page, we talk about where we are of the number of students that we had that were advanced, which is a good indication, again, we are above the state level in all areas. Not by much, but above the state level in all areas. Looking down, we have our percentage of enrollment, which now, our economically disadvantaged advantage number since last year is creeping up to nearly fifty percent, and our English-language learners are considerably higher than five percent this year as well. And we're up to twenty, twenty-six students at Jackson Wall, English-language learners. Special education numbers are probably in line with the state and with everyone else. I don't know why we have fifty-one percent, men, boys, only forty-eight percent girls. Sellers market, girls. Our attendance, we tracked our attendance for the last three years, and actually, twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, we're seeing a downturn in attendance at Jackson Wall, for sure. We had more hearings, it's the first time I was in court yesterday citing four people. Four people were, had, were, they summoned us yesterday. Attendance, and that's more than I had in the last five or six years. So, that was just yesterday. Attendance is clearly a concern, I'm sure across the district, but I know for sure at Jackson Wall, and no matter what we do, we can't drag people to school. We send them, we send letters, we send them applications, we send, we meet with them, we have encouragement, we talk about plans, and attendance is a concern. I would say by the end of this year, we've already spent ninety-six. Remember this presentation there. Our percentage of provision and events I did over the last four years, can be difficult to track that. Obviously, a lot depends on what test you get against. So, you see, students are going forty-four to sixty-nine, forty-eight to seventy-seven. What happened at sixty-nine? Where you look in the fourth grade, how we went from eighty-five to sixty-five, up to seventy-eight to sixty-three. It's certainly with their students, we relatively teach the same programs and relatively do the same thing with the same teachers, and, you know, a lot of it depends on how they make the test each, each year. They can do whatever they want, they can make it so difficult that everyone will struggle. Our last scores that we have are SPP scores, which really are an indication of factoring in all the things that we have at our school. Talk about our, our economically disadvantaged rate, our YSL population, all those things that are factors in our school, special education population, and this year, we were fifteenth, seventy-two point eight, fifteenth out of fifty-six schools in Berks County. Fifty-six elementary schools, we finished fifteenth. So, overall, you know, that's a, that's a number I'm really proud of and I'm proud of our faculty and staff for their hard work. Over the, over the last seven years at Jackson Wall, there were three times when we were recognized, and less than five percent of the state were recognized as distinguished schools in kind of one. We received an honor three of the last seven years, which is quite an accomplishment. I remember when Senator Schwenk was here to recognize us last year at the school board meeting. That's all I have for my report.
Well, Joe, first, I'd just like to say thank you, you have a role. I think our students benefit from you being the leader in schools, both here at L.A. and over at Jackson Wall. I think the future benefits from you being your leader, and I truly appreciate the almost ten years that we've had the opportunity to work together, and your way of identifying needs that the children have, then defending them, sticking up for the people who work for you to get what they need along the way as best as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I, if you're missed, not to say, this is probably the last opportunity that I have to address the school board, ever. Yeah, right. And...
You can come back.
And I would be, I would be remiss at this point, not to say that I'm leaving this district, other circumstances which, which are not the way I want to leave this district. Retire in June, July, rather. I always thought that being here for nineteen years, running a school in this district for nearly two decades, with the academic success we had, our parents, how our parents love our school, the minimal problems we had at that school district for this district, in, at that school for this district, and to leave under the situation that I am leaving in is most disappointing, most disappointing. I don't want to elaborate any further on it, I just know this is my last chance to talk to you people, and I'm just saying how I feel from my heart, and I'm very disappointed. But I thank you for my time here, and for what went on, and I know I've been here a lot longer, that a lot of people assume I've been here, and that was more than a job for me. It was way more than a job for me. It's always been more than a job for me. There's a sign on the wall in Jackson Wall, when you walk into Jackson Wall, and it says, "People don't care how much you know until they know how much you care." And that's something I live by, putting our students first, doing what's best for our district at all times. And, yeah, I just, it's kind of shameful, and I'm going to leave on that note.
Hey. I'm secretary, reported after the preliminary budget. Is this, can you hear me?
It's going on the left.
It's going to be this direction, so it's going to be on the inside. Okay. Okay, so, we're starting the proposed final budget process. In March, the Disassemblies Committee met to go over some changes. Administrators met with Professor Phillips and I, and we started to kind of publish numbers, prioritize staff requests, so I wanted to update the board on where we stand at this point of post-final budget. The timeline, what's most important here is, by May twentieth, we have to have a post-final budget ready, adopted by the school board. We can continue to make changes through June, June eighteenth, means final adoption of the budget and village is set. Tomorrow, we will be having a Disassemblies Committee meeting to discuss the budget more, to brainstorm some possibly cost-saving ideas. It's a tough budget, it gets, it's, you know, a little weary of developing the budget, and the reason is, things have not changed over the years with the state funding. You get very minimal funding from the state, and obviously, they have the issue with Peasers, you know, filling that gap, that mandate, very little increase in special education funding, and all districts are feeling the cost increases, and I'll elaborate on it later, but, you know, it's really the same story, and hearing the same story year after year, it gets weary some, and it's going to be a challenge to try and deal with Peasers, continue to deal with Peasers, with special education costs, with charter school tuition. The legislature has failed to provide any real reform there, and it really impacts school districts and taxpayers. So, on that note, I will move on here. But I managed to put thirty-four slides together to torture with, so I guess it was a fat theory after all. So, our largest source of local revenue, obviously, is our property assessed value, and it changes throughout the year. You have, the start of the year, at one point four billion, you have intervals, which, when there's new construction, additions to properties, they get reassessed, that's commercial, and some small residential that they actually do with addition. One of the biggest increases in the January intervals was storage world, so that added about four million, but you also know that we had a, an appeal that was settled on a large commercial property in this district. So, we're pretty much at the same place at this point in time that we were at the beginning of the fiscal year, which this chart illustrates that. So, how do you calculate your real estate tax revenue? I'm assuming we'll have some April intervals, but we also have another large assessment appeal going on. So, you make those assumptions of what you think your assessed value might be July one, have a collection rate based on your current rate. So, we're looking at about forty-four million in local real estate tax revenue, which is essentially the same as what we're estimating for this year. It's only a difference of about twenty thousand, so that's before any tax increase. Other areas, I'll just point out, this year, our budget to estimate change is four hundred six thousand better than we had originally projected, but going from this year to next year, it's only a nine thousand dollar difference. We have been reflecting in the budget increases in earned income tax, the second highest area of local revenue. So, we see, you know, a slight upward trend. It's not big dollars, but it's a positive trend. Same with transfer tax and business privilege tax. The orange line is transfer, and the blue line is business privilege. So, these numbers and slight increases are built into the budget. Investment income, that rebounded over the last year in investment income, that's included in the budget for this year and as well as next year. So, local revenue without any tax increase, we're really not, you know, this year and next year seeing a lot of new money there. So, governor's budget, the top appropriations in the budget, it's one-third of their resources, is basic education funding, retirement, special education, social security, pupil transportation. So, looking at the basic education subsidy, this year it is eight point eight million. What is in the governor's budget is nine point five million, but that's not the real number. They rolled in Ready to Learn grant, which has been a grant for a number of years, but sometimes they put categorical grants up in the basic education subsidy, but the difference that we're getting is two percent or a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Special education subsidy, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So, these are, they were funds, but it's really not enough to cover our needs. Looking at the base education subsidy, over the past nine years, two point two percent increase on average for a hundred and sixty-five thousand per year. Special education, on average, one point seven, or thirty-one thousand dollars a year. You'll see later what our specialist, special education cost has increased over time, not only Exeter, but most school districts in Pennsylvania. Retirement reimbursement subsidy, on average, seventy-seven percent increase per year since eleven twelve, or five hundred sixty-two thousand dollars a year. This is where our funds are going while we're trying to control all the other costs, to make room for the, for this mandate's costs. So, summary of state and federal sources of revenue, really, you know, it's just a ninety-one thousand dollar loss, mostly increases in retirement. Our debt service goes down because one of our projects or debt issues at a high reimbursement rate is paid off to DM this year. So, that is going to be a reduction in revenue, state sources of revenue. Federal programs, I'm assuming what we're estimating for this year, we will have that next year. And the proceeds from extended-term financing, that's basically leasing technology equipment. You reflect the source of revenue here, as well as the cost of the asset on the expense So, in summary, this, looking at the proposed final budget to the current year estimate, a hundred and fifty-one thousand before any tax increase. And again, as I mentioned earlier, the estimate for this year compared to the original budget is four hundred and seventy-seven thousand higher. And a lot of that had to do with investment income, and built in the twenty-five thousand for the Act Forty-four, Part... A lot of that had to do with investment income and built in the 25,000 for the Act 44 Part A grant. As well as some additional access Medicaid funding. So moving on to the topic of the education deficit and increase in mandated costs. The costs over the period from 2010 through 2016 have increased 3.97 billion compared to state revenue of 1.9 billion. So pension, that, you know, nearly 11.1% of the cost for expenditures is related to pension. It's just taking a bigger piece of the pie. Charter school, we need funding reform. I know Senator Schmike has reintroduced the bill to get some reform, where if you have, your districts have their own cyber program, which is, you know, equivalent scope and content to the cyber charters, that we should not, students who choose to enroll in those outside cyber charters, we should not have to pay that tuition. So we really need to hammer home the impact that this has on the school district. And for us, it's 1.2 million. Special education, again, you know, construction costs and support are growing at about 6% per year with 1.25 billion. These are state line numbers. So what's in our budget at this point? Looking at staff and wages, you know, that's almost 67 million dollars. Since February, we've cut out about 760,000. We've prioritized the staff request. We've, you know, included the impact on retirements. Nine retirements, two of those positions were not filling. The employee benefits, you know, we're still, we have an 8.5% increase in healthcare costs. In May, we'll find out what the final rate is, but, you know, that's over $700,000. So looking at year-to-year, we have wages and benefits increasing 2.7 million. Outback 2.7 million, almost a million or 918,000 is related to new staff requests. We prioritize them as one or two. One being special education, three professional teachers, two special ed aides, a coordinator of personalized learning, total of about 500,000. Priority two, some administrative staff changes, learning support math, Spanish, math coach, and some miscellaneous support staff. That's 285,000. Act 44, we included a position related to mental health. And if that grant does come through this month, we should find out whether it's approved. That would remain in the budget. If it doesn't get approved, then that will be taken out. And incidentally, I have not included the revenue yet for Act 44. I'm just waiting to hear this month what happens. So again, 2.7 million dollars of that 900,000 is new staff request. Wages by objects, just for your information, healthcare premium is eventually 0.5%. Retirement is 34.2%. Again, healthcare and retirement are the largest cost drivers in this category. This is a summary of all non-payroll related items. We were able to squeeze out 200,000 since the preliminary budget. Just polished our news, getting better quotes, some of our bid numbers came in, and we'll continue to polish the numbers. But really, again, the main cost drivers, you know, are wages and benefits. So looking at that category of non-payroll expense, year-to-year change, looking at the estimate, from 1819 to 1920, just in Op. 300 through 900, it's a 1.1 million dollar increase. The number on the very bottom here represents the 1.1 plus the payroll and benefits for 3.9 million. So the all other, not looking at wages and benefits, these are some new items that are in the budget this year. And I reviewed these as part of the preliminary process. And we'll continue to look at some of these. You have the amount of Pro Books, how far are we going to roll this out? We're getting pricing on Pro Books and the other technology equipment that needs to be replaced. We'll get firm pricing on science and social studies resources. But again, this, some of these are one-time expenses, but they do add up to about a million dollars of new initiatives. This pie chart compares what we look like in 1112 in terms of expense excluding major improvements compared to the budget for next year. So and really what it shows is that the falling share of salaries is a percent versus a rising share of pension and healthcare costs. So in 1112, employee wages, 48%, it's 42% now. Benefits was 20%, it's now 29%. And if you would look at the other categories, 300 through 900, really what you see is not a lot of, not a lot of change. Are actually our debt service has gone down percentage-wise. Supplies and purchase services have remained, actually a little less in 1920 than they were in 1112. Purchase services, which is your tuition, charter school tuition, private tuition, you know, 8% it's now 7%. Part of that was, you know, our charter tuition has come down. We've really made strides in, you know, keeping students, you know, in our district. So really just giving you the perspective of what these mandated costs of pension are, what it does to budget. Again, Peasers, 70% from, on average. Healthcare expense, you know, 8.5 million next year. And that's something that really needs to be, we are part of a health trust and there are initiatives to help employees who have healthcare to be better consumers. But we do have the Duffle plans. There has to be some change in trying to control these costs. And being a better consumer, you know, could bring about change, but there probably needs to be more change. And again, on May 22nd, we'll know the maximum exceed rate and hopefully it will come down, you know, a few percentage points. Each percentage point is about 75,000 dollars. So again, cyber tuition, again, you know, these rates are based upon our budget numbers. It isn't, for cyber charter programs, it has nothing to do with what their costs are. But we have brought up the numbers now, as you can see in the left chart, from a high of 120 down to 74, being led to the next year. Special education costs increased on average about 6% annually since 2006, '07. And I list the reasons there. Increase in the high need, special education enrollment, transportation. Need, we had to hire additional special education staffers, showed that in the staff request. And when you look at the funding number is, 1% increase per year. So our costs are 16.5 million for judges for next year, the funding is 2.9. In summary, the bottom line, summary of revenue and expense, looking at the post-final, no tax increase, a 4.9 million dollar deficit. Raising to the index of 3%, 3.6 million. Taking the special ed exception qualified for, gives about an additional 685,000, gives us a deficit of 2.8 million. So raising to the max generates a little over 2 million in additional tax revenue. And just go back and remember that number of staffing and benefit, 2.7 million dollar increase. So 2 million is just barely covering our wage and benefit increases for our current staff. It's not going to cover the new staff that's being requested. So we have a lot of, you know, things to consider. Take a closer look at priority two, staff, and even possibly priority one. The rest of this are components of our fund balance. The bottom line is the total fund balance. Commitments, which our board approved, commitments for teachers, construction projects, and assessment reductions. The assignments relate to intended use of future fund balance. And I'll go through those in more detail in future meetings. But with no tax increase, our unassigned fund balance goes to, you know, 3.73%. We currently have a policy that says that number should be not less than 5%. And really, the most important thing to understand here is, without raising taxes, your deficit just continues to grow year after year. Because what you created is a structural deficit. This year was 1.9 million, it's down to 1.2. You know, I'll continue to monitor, especially with the expense numbers as we survive. So the impact, since 2009, 10, third year, nine years on average, 1.6% increase in taxes. The school board really has outlined, as well as administrators and staff, trying to control costs. So in terms of 3% or 4.5, 2% increase, what does that mean to an average assessed property? This is our residential assessment, this is just residential properties, 108,000. On an annual basis, a 3% increase, 106,000, 160,000 for a 4.5% increase. This is on a monthly basis. 150, can I say 50? Lots of numbers today. So we'll continue to review the budget and as I mentioned on Act 44, we're waiting to hear if we are awarded part B. Next week, I do plan on doing a summary of the five-year projection to show you the impact of the potential future year deficits. Continue to polish the expenses. This budget scenario doesn't include the savings, which will realize hopefully in the 2019 bond refunding, which will be about 200,000. But we're also discussing some new money, you know, bring that number down. As you, with new money, there's some new principal and interest payments. Again, I mentioned about the healthcare premium. Are there any questions?
Pam, just one. In the slide, about Peaser changes, it said 70% annually. Is that correct?
Yes.
70% every year it goes up?
I, on average. That's just on a, I basically, you know, took the dollars and divided by, you know, the number of years. And took the percentage, it was over 800 some thousand, 800%. Added too many zeros here and then divided by, you know, 11 years.
And that's true.
And that's statewide too. I presented that in an earlier slide. So it's consistent with what's going on.
70% every year, high.
On average, on average.
And that's due to the state changing their formula for what the district's cost of Peasers is from, I can't remember what it was, 2009. I think it started under 10% and went up to 32, off the top of my head, 32% or something along those lines.
Well, we were around 8% back in 2011, '12. Now, our next year is 34.2 million.
Okay.
So my new salary serves based on, on the dollars. So now we, but we will pay, contribute 11 million in next year's budget compared to what in the, wait, I'm lying, 1.3 billion. Will it? Well, in '22, '23, it's at about 35 points. It's starting to level off, but it will stay at around 35 to 36 for the next 20 to 30 years.
Pam, do we know, this, this might be really off the cuff for you to be able to answer. But I've been thinking a lot about the new borrowing that we were discussing for, as part of our bond refunding. Do we know what the total cost of the district would be in the interest payments that we would have to make? Or do we have an idea of what that would look like for the long term? As you can answer it now, I understand.
Well, we, we looked at the 1.5 million and that adds about 45,000 per year in debt service. And it's the savings that we're going to take on the refunding, the total savings is about 436,000. We'll probably take the largest piece of that next year, 200 some thousand, because our debt service jumps up a little bit next year. So that savings will help, you know, smooth it out. So the savings on the refunding and then the new debt service of 1.5 million, it would kind of wash itself every year. No impact budget or very little. But if we weren't to consider borrowing more, which, based on some recent estimates of project costs, in order to meet those costs, you may have to borrow more. 2.7 million, 3 million, that would be about 80,000 dollars per year. So on a net basis, adding 40,000 dollars in interest and principal per year. We go a little higher. So that gives you general.
Well, I just, you know, on that note, I wanted to share generally that at this point, I'm probably not supportive of far additional capital on top of our refinancing. And I know that that would make the scenario more difficult in the immediate term. But I think that with our indebtedness starting to decrease and pure savings that we can realize from the 200,000, I think what we should start doing is positioning ourselves more in our own general fund budget to have larger transfers, which I realize complicates our deficit position. But paying the interest on the debt as much as we have been, and it's finally beginning to go down, I don't think that we should start to add that on. I'm leaving myself open. There's a possibility that I can still report that, but at this point, I'm very skeptical. And I, I think that we should work to include more of that cost in the general fund that we would begin to transfer money from the general fund, the capital expense, capital expense fund, to pay some of the future costs that we are looking at.
Mr. Harris, we're going to, we're going to be looking at additional later this evening. Maybe we can continue the conversation then. Thank you. Thank you, man. Next week, we're going to be looking at the minutes for March, the workshop that will be minutes for approval. Moving on to item six, we're going to be looking at the second reading of several of our revised policies. We already found policy 601, which is fiscal objectives, 602, budget planning, 603, budget preparation, 604, budget adoption, 605, tax levy, 606, tax collection, 607, twist proof, 608, 806, child abuse. Does anyone have any comments or questions on this, the policies at this point?
I just would, would say one thing in reading the, particularly the policy 600. It really does set the tone for what the, what the board's role is, which is to recognize its responsibility to the district taxpayers to ensure that public money is expended by the school district, utilized to deliver the utilized to deliver the educational programs in a manner that mandates full value to taxpayers. And that adequate procedures and records are established to ensure that end. And I've always felt the process that we go through is a fairly exhaustive nine-month process to try to root out every conceivable excess expense. And I know, I noticed just now that the business function meeting has come across our calendars for tomorrow evening. So, again, I think once again, we're going through the process of trying to figure out how we continue to proceed with our fiduciary responsibility to board members to meet the fiscal objectives.
Any other comments at this time? Okay, we're going, next week, we'll be looking at first readings for policy 609, investment of district funds. 609.1 is post issuance compliance. 610, purchase subject bid quotation. 611, purchase, purchasing budgeted. 612, purchases not budgeted. 613, corporate purchasing. 810, transportation. Along with 810.1, school bus drivers and school commercial motor vehicle drivers. Are there any questions or comments on those policies at this time?
The only thing I would say is, typically, Dr. Hamburger gives a summary. I don't know if he had done that this time. Are there any other questions?
I read through the policy briefing that Dr. Hamburger shared with me. So, if any, I, I can read it now, actually.
Sure.
Let me, let me pull up. Give me one moment. So, if anybody has any questions, I would be great to have them.
I do have a question. So, policy 810 talks about that drivers are sometimes supplied with information, if you find it exactly, regarding the needs of the student they have them. So, I was curious if any bus drivers are ever CPR first aid certified, depending on what the needs of the child need.
They would be, they would need be. All of our bus drivers, pre-service workers, various support staff were trained first aid about two years ago by all three, our athletic trainer, and some other first aid type of thing. But if they would be CPR, they would get CPR.
Yeah, I apologize.
Are you okay with showing any other questions on that? Okay, Mr. Harris.
So, just to want to run through the policies that I was given the briefing on. For bank accounts, there was added language on cash and check table and obtaining quotations for specified services as per PSBA recommendation. We also deleted language that was more procedural and possibly outdated as well that needed to be included in administrative regulations. 609, investment of district funds added. A legal note pertaining to Act 10 and changes in the statute that the state has passed down for PSBA policy guide. We also updated resubordination language that PSBA also recommended. The post issuance compliance, the solicitor reviewed the policy. He didn't have too many comments, although I think there were some changes to the reference to business manager versus director of finance. This is not a PSBA policy. This is one that our bond council had recommended, I believe, in 2016?
13.
2013. And we're maintaining much the same that it was first introduced. Purchase subject to bid quotation. We're changing this policy annually to keep up with the, let me get this right here. The consumer price index change to the bid floor from the Department of Labor and Industry. So, that will be changed annually to, to keep up to date. Currently, I believe in the policy, it's 20,100, what? 20,600?
No, right now it says, well, it's crossed off, 20,600.
That's the one I wanted. The 20,600 is the one that we would be voting on. Purchases budgeted, updated dollar amounts for contemplated purchases, amount of compliance with law. There was other information that's deleted that is more appropriate for administrative policy, mostly dealing around the guidelines. Purchases not budgeted, revised and approved, and there were no changes needed because this policy was recently updated in 2016. Corporate purchasing, deleted some stuff that would be more appropriate in administrative regulations, such as the list that is specified, leaves the list of items that may be specified in an agreement approved by the board, which is listed in statute. And as we come up to it, it will be added to administrative regulation when applicable. Policies on bus drive, transportation, and school bus drivers were new to me, so I don't have the changes that were made to those. I don't know if, if Dr. Miller can speak to that, or if anybody. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I can.
I know Dr. Hamburger will probably update you guys next week about what the changes were before we vote on them. The only question that I had, and it was more of a comment, I guess, at this point, because I did share my, my comments with the administration, and I think that they're comfortable to move forward. But in terms of 609.1, post issuance compliance, I think the board has more recently been decreasing the amount of content in the policies that's more appropriate for administrative regulations, and focusing more exclusively on the board's role in delegating the responsibility to officials within the district and certain authorities. And I, I thought that this one was a little bit more detailed than we're used to. The administration came back and said that they thought that it would be fine to move forward on this policy, and I'm comfortable with that. So, this is just, it's a little bit different than, I think, the ones that we've been putting forward before. But I don't think that there's much of an issue that we need to be concerned about. And I had no issue with the substance that was in the policy. I think the only other question that I had that I wanted to address tonight was in regards to bid bonds and being included in policy 610. I don't know if you heard back from Ellis or Sean, Anne?
Sean did reply to me, you know, indicating that putting do's amounts in the policy, you know, if the law were to change, then you'd have to keep going back and revising. But I can get more clarification, you know, look around, see whether anyone here does include them.
Did he, did he kind of talk about the needs mentioned in this, including the bid bonds? Or is that more appropriate for an admin regulation?
It was a very short reply.
Okay. Okay, I have no other.
Saying that putting them in there would just cause you to have to go back and change, as the law changes.
Sure, okay.
Any other questions at this time? If not, I'm going to ask Mr. Yelich, all the business functions there, please.
Thank you. Next week, we'll be voting on agreement of understanding with unions and schools of Pennsylvania. That is, of course, the teacher-in-the-bar program, and the state tax exemption, minimum present value debt service savings, parameters resolution to issue debt, and budget transfers.
Any questions or comments, or any of the areas that Mr. Yelich brought up at this time?
So, the other one, we're going to discuss the personal activities. So, next week, we'll be voting on several categories, including retirements, resignations, appointments, change of status, force requests, staff conferences, and the job description associated with the technology support. That's the position we've talked about in, for example.
No, this is something different.
Which one's this?
Is this the one with Joey?
Yeah, I believe that one, yes.
That's in part of the, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll listen.
No, I can, yeah.
Okay. For the, the position for, I think it's for the technical department, the technology department, I'm sorry. I know that we're applying for the grant funding to get the position. After that grant funding would run out, is there a recommendation at this time from the administration, whether that's a?
It's no longer, because it was cut from the curriculum.
We chose, some of the information that we were given is the, the monies will be geared toward more safety, security, and health. So, we chose to really focus our grant request on health. This is not that position, this is a position he wants to just rework within his department. Correct?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yes. This is an update to these goals.
One hundred percent.
So, we already, you already have this stat?
Yes. Yes.
Any other comments, questions, for, for Ian this time? No, that's the strategy. This is, I'm going to, your studio folks, there, please?
Next week, we'll be reporting on field trips in the college and 60 mile radius, as well as voting on field trips to be on the 60 mile radius, and also discussing and proving the approval.
Any questions or comments this time?
I have no comments. Just wanted to mention that family have reached out to me with some concern. They've also reached out to the principal at their school, as well as at their parents, regarding the fact that as a board, we have a policy that encourages parent participation within the school, and at the same time, limiting involvement with field trips. I had a conversation with the parents, to test and improve all of their thoughts, but I just wanted to bring that to everyone who thinks that there's some disappointment when you're not sure if you're able to go on a field trip, or you feel like your child has needs, and you're not able to provide them because you're not able to go on a field trip. So, just like that, I wanted to take it out. I promised this person I would bring it up.
I, I appreciate that. I had this discussion as well. It's a logistical situation where if you're chosen, you get to go. That's for parents. The suggestions or requests would put us in a dire situation where consistency is really important, and we would have to allow that same for every parent. And I tried to discuss that with them. Just hesitate on principles.
Any other comments or questions at this time? Okay, so then we were facilities committee. Next week, we're going to have two items. First, we're going to have the capital projects rebid, where you recommend the board directors authorize the district administration to rebid the following projects, which are the lightest operable window replacement for gutter repair replacement of the junior high school chiller plant and piping. The second will be a rebidding that will occur in November 2019, where you recommend the board directors authorize the administration to rebid projects for Jacksonwall and Lorraine. The Jacksonwall will be replacing the classroom unit ventilators, replacing pneumatic controls, control controls, et cetera. And Lorraine will also be replacing the classroom unit ventilators, pneumatic controls, et cetera. Are there any other questions or comments this time, or that?
There was, the reason we're rebidding is because the original estimate didn't come anywhere near where the bids came. So, now we're faced with having to bid it yet. Now, my suggestion would be that whatever costs were occurring should be passed on to KCDN. And any, anything they reveal us under the bid advising should not be paid. Because we're having to deal with a second call.
I know the gentleman from KCDN is here today. Ed, can you talk for a moment, maybe we can have some questions for you, and maybe you can help us understand where our, where our process is moving forward. I know that we're adjusting some schedules. Originally, we were planning on having work done in Jacksonwall in the summer. Now, because of this issue, we're going to be pushing that back. So, there's going to be some alterations to our original plan.
Right, Doug, it is true, the numbers came in significantly higher than, just that it's not, I'm sorry.
Mr. Green.
I, Eric. So, the bids that did come in significantly higher, as Mr. Yelich mentioned, the, one of the big drivers, there were multiple things that basically converged here, and one of which was estimated, which you can't deny it was off. And I understand the frustration of the district, and we understand that the district does incur costs for additional advertising. But any sort of rebid situation, just so you know, there's, there's no costs coming from our side, any rework of drawings, specifications, other documents, that's all upon us, and that's laid out by contract. So, the district is protected in that way. So, some of the other things, other than our, our estimating practices that played significant factors in the increased cost, one of which was the controls portion of the HVC system. These came in significantly higher. For example, 1.4 million dollars worth of equipment at Lorraine. The associate controls for that system was $870,000. Looking at what general practice rules of thumb on a conservative level, we expected those to be more in the range of $400,000, or just $30,000. So, as part of the rebid scenarios, we're going to make sure that there's alternates for the controls portion of that bid contract, to make sure the district is protected in that rebid scenario so we don't have a replication of the spike cost. Part of that was because there was, there's a current control system that takes care of all the district facilities, except for two. And trying to design an efficient system with good interaction, trying to tie on the schools together, we basically got a little bit taken advantage of on the control side, a little, a lot. So, what we're going to try to do is fuse that impact with the rebid scenario. It gets very technical, and if you want to get into the weeds, I have the engineers here with me. They can describe it in a little more detail. But basically, introducing an open call system as an ultimate, a couple other manufacturers of control systems. We think that will bring the cost down, aggregate about $700, $800, $800,000 from where these original bids came in. It's a very busy bidding market. We do a lot of school projects, and a lot of summer, over the summer projects. We, our, our office has been putting out a lot, so have every other office. We've talked into mechanical, electrical contractors that we had that did this work last year. Their anxious to hear what the district's going to do here, because they've got other bids that they want to pursue. So, it's, it's a hot market, which drives costs. There have been some equipment increases as well. And anytime you do a summer project, it's a intense period of time. Sometimes, busy contractors, in order to take on more work, will put in a higher bid to cover themselves from exposure to completion on time. So, basically, we're trying to recommend that we move forward with junior high work, because that was slated to happen in the fall anyway after the cooling season. Same thing with the riften windows. We think we can shoot that work within this year's budget. Both of those numbers, we think, were in range. The controls were a little high, a little high as well, but we think we can make those adjustments to the rebid documents. So, mitigate that a bit. It wasn't anywhere near the scale of the other two schools. But for the November bid recommendation, we're going to look at bidding those as separate pieces as well to help stimulate interest from the market. And going at that time, we'll be ahead of all the other districts that are trying to get work lined up for the next summer. So, more interest, more competition drive costs.
Are there other questions for KCDN, or the, who's yours?
Yeah. I just want to, you did provide us revised estimates, and the projects at Lorraine and Jacksonwall, based on the estimates that you provided yesterday, they will cost significantly more than the original estimate. So, I think the board needs to be aware that we are, our project costs going forward rather than the 2.8 million from the estimate earlier in the year, to over $5 million. So, there's, there's a real number, so it's going to play into, do we need to, how are we going to plan to pay for all this?
Absolutely, yeah. Don't be underplayed with the impact. The reason we provide those, those updated budget numbers, where we've got a real snapshot of this bid. Although it was high, it gives us more realistic approach that we can give to Hannah. This critical time for everybody, considerations. It is. It is significant, but we do believe that these are real numbers that are out there. We did take the low numbers from each contract. We took an average between the low, the highs. So it is a little bit on the conservative side, but we don't want to get caught with a low estimate. After you go through the, if you decide to move forward, go through with additional borrow, in the worst case scenario, we still might have another project.
Maybe I can get some background on this quick. What will the outcome or the purpose be behind the operable window replacements and the gutter repair replacements at the right school? And I don't know if Craig wants to talk to that, I don't know if you want to talk to that. But just generally speaking, what is the purpose for that? What are we accomplishing with those replacements?
Yeah. The windows at Wright have been a problem since I walked in the door. Was one of the major complications of the building. Not to throw shade on people who were here before me, but the quality and type of windows that were used in the construction of the building was in question. They're difficult, but almost impossible to operate at times, and can be a danger to people trying to operate them. So that was something that was on the priority list, that when KCDN did their initial tours through the district, that was definitely one of the major items that came up.
Just to give you a visualization, not to jump in, but these are basically oversized double hump windows, which is a typical for a school. Typically, we would see a large, it's six foot high by three and a half feet wide. So your normal teacher swinging over a bookshelf and a deep sill to get the leverage to push that up is very difficult. Additionally, it could be a safety hazard having an opening that large in a second story building. So usually what we do in elementary schools and even high school level is, if you want that size window, we create a push open awning style window that's maybe sixteen inches high. While it'll give you the ventilation you need for the classrooms during those nice, the small window, nice months where you can get the fresh air, but it offers you the safety as well and easier operation.
He's right. Some of them are difficult to open and equally difficult to close, especially at the top. One time I saw, there was one of those that actually, in stairwells, that actually they have like a spring mechanism. And somebody went to open it up, one of our buildings and grounds men, and it actually snapped. And, you know, because of that, we're concerned, we want to make sure that those windows are replaced.
So I'm guessing that the purpose behind the replacement is to have better ventilation or more cool classrooms during some of the warmer months, is that fair?
That's the need for ventilation, but I think it's approached as more of a safety issue.
So I guess for me, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but we're facing some of the challenges that we were talking about. And I don't mean the little, the need for safety when we're opening the windows, because I can understand, you know. I did it at Albright, where one of my peers showed up in the window, and the window did not stay open, and it caught his hand on the other side. I guess I'm just concerned, why does this rise to the need now? To me, if there's a concern with the buildings not being cool enough to be effective, classrooms during some of the warmer months, I can definitely appreciate that. But, you know, from what I'm hearing, it sounds more like this is a safety issue where we don't want people who are opening the windows to be harmed. Fair. You know, to me, with what we're looking at, you know, my solution would be, don't open the windows. And I know that maybe that sounds a little bit harsh right now, but frankly, we need every dollar we can find, and I'm just, I'm concerned that this isn't one of the ones that rises to the level of where we need to be spending. So I don't know if you guys want to respond to that, I'm fine with that. I can respect that people can reasonably disagree about this. But unless I, unless I maybe hear more about what I'm not understanding, I don't know if I'm going to be interested in voting for this.
Are they more energy efficient? Is that one of the questions?
If the current windows are insulated units, the school isn't that old, so the default is it's an insulated window. So they are fairly energy efficient.
Yeah.
So I don't think it's necessarily the energy efficiency. The newer units with smaller openings, if they are open, you have less cooling loss or heat loss. If a room gets, is out of balance and it gets overheated and the teacher opens a window, that's a sign of mechanical problem, a window problem. So I think you have a grasp of the reason for it, it's mainly safety. The reason for open windows is quality of air for and perceive better environment for the students and the teacher. That would be the request that we typically get when there's operable windows. Our engineers would prefer that they shield solid so they can balance the building at all times and reduce the size of the handle. So we often have that tug of war between the desired ventilation versus rough building.
I think when we're looking at this particular area, this is not even going to be approved about a year and a half ago, as they were making out of our plans. We're slated for this year. Frankly, I think safety is something you always put before fun. Reasonably invested a lot in the last year in various areas of safety for all of our buildings. I think telling a teacher they can't open a window on a nice day is probably one of those things where I don't think Craig has to be the window police. I don't think that's part of his job. And for example, today was a beautiful day, the sixties, and I myself would have loved to have opened the window in my building. But alongside of that, we're also looking at replacing the cutters in that building, because they have alterations, correct?
A section. Ninety percent of the very appreciate one area in the back courtyard over there is got some issues.
What was the, what's the approximate budget we have for the window cutter project?
I think that's $390,000. Now, that's a lot of windows.
So we're looking at less than $400,000?
Yes. $388,000, that includes, grand to $80,000 is the updated budget that includes a little bit of gutter repair.
And the windows replacement is a problem?
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, the whole building, correct?
Yeah, it's basically the whole building. With the exception of a few fixed windows and bathrooms and other places, they're almost all up.
Would you do a ballpark for how much is the gutter and how much is the window?
The gutter's maybe $10,000, $12,000 more. So mostly windows, generally $6,000, $6,000.
Hey, I want to pick up on $100 a second. So I don't know what these windows look like that are in there now. How do they open?
Just like the ones at home. You lift up, it's a double hump.
The top, yeah, because they're very heavy.
Yeah, they are heavy. When I was there most recently doing the walkthrough, the pre-bid walkthrough of the contractors, I went and opened a couple, and it...
It's challenging.
It's challenging. I'm not a big guy, but it was challenging.
So is there a fear of them falling down, or is it just difficult to put them up to the point where you could hurt yourself?
I think that was the initial thing, was snapping on the sash. So if you ever had one of the sashes go at home, you know, the whole weight, if it goes through, it's not like an elevator, it's got a seat attached to it. So I don't know how many issues we've had with that, but I think the red flag.
And I appreciate, I mean, Craig, have there been problems where somebody has been injured by these, these, that's not working?
I have witnessed a window come down, kind of like a...
Yolting?
That's exactly what I, that's exactly what I thought when I saw it. Now, that was the former buildings and grounds man with the former assistant superintendent. And they were doing a walkthrough, and they went to open up the window, and it just slammed down. It was, and it took forever then to actually get the window back. Now, what they did was they, you know, they put a screw in there so that nobody can get it open again until it's repaired, you know, until it's replaced. But it was dangerous. And a lot of those windows, you know, as I said, they're hard to get up, and even when they can get them up, you know, even for, you know, I'm not very strong, but it's difficult to do.
I don't, it's not my intention at all to say that this is a small ball thing, because I understand that it could be a concern. And the last thing we need is for a kid to put his arm out when he's putting the window up, and the window comes back down. But, you know, we got to figure out somewhere where we're going to cut back. And Jim, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments. You know, to me, this is low hanging fruit, and I think that we should vote no on this.
Well, at this point, I'm going to ask, are there any other questions? We continue, I say, any other questions on any other items for KCDN or their engineering team tonight? Thank you. One thing I'd like to do is I'd like to return to, I know C and D on the business functions regarding the refinancing. I know that Hunter, you wanted to explore that some more, and when we got to that, we kind of moved quickly through that, and I didn't want to ignore your concern there. I think we definitely have some good ideas to figure ourselves. I'm sure you have an idea, I wouldn't assume I have a thing or idea, and I'm worried around the room, because we all have a hundred different ideas. I think I'm going to open up for Mr. Gallup's business committee, and then we can continue the conversation. And maybe, maybe Mrs. Dyson can start off, and maybe we can just take your options and all recruit.
Do you provide one clear opinion?
Yes.
Is the $12 million number the one with additional lines, or is that just the refinancing?
That's, that would include additional. That's why we, I'm going to ask you, James, I'm just going to figure out what the flat number is.
Okay, thank you.
2014, excuse me, issue is what's being refunded. The refunding amount, looking at the year now, is about $8.1 million, 2014 issue. We've looked at the scenario of new money, $1.5 million, the total of $1.6, keeping it bank qualified. Now, since our estimates have changed, the reason the parameters resolution is $12 million is they always make it high enough when you're, or higher than what new money that you really intend to issue. It's just the way that they do that to capture. So based on the revised estimates of these projects on the agenda tonight, you may need to borrow additional money more than $1.5 million. A couple of questions for our financial advisor tomorrow. But we also, we looked at the scenario of $2.7 million, as I mentioned in your budget presentation, what that would add in terms of debt service. That would take us over the bank qualified number of $10 million. But the rates in the market now are not that much different to our bank qualified versus non-bank qualified. The question for our advisor is, borrowing more than $2.7 million or $3 million, what it does to the debt service schedule? Because right now, the way it's being positioned is that new money would be rolled into 2028. That's the year where our debt drops off. So the majority of that principal would occur in that year. So going from, for example, in 2027, debt $8 million in that amount, and 2028, it would go to $6.7 million. If we weren't issuing any new money, it would go to $5.2. So pretty much putting it at the end of the schedule. Going beyond $2.7, $3 million, maybe put some into 2029. And that's the question I have, James slash Eric tomorrow. Is that a good lead in?
I think that's a good piece. I'm sure as questions come up, we'll go from there. So Mr. Gallup, I'm going to defer to you to start off, if you'd like to.
My thinking is that if we can do the additional money to buttress for emergencies, such as estimates being off by nearly double, we should look at it. And if additional money is able to be grabbed for X number of dollars, that money can be found in the budget somewhere to make it zero out. As long as that can be done, I can support it.
And any money has to be set within three years. And we have projects based on these, but definitely it would be better.
This is Crowe. I'll go around the board, please.
I have issues unrelated to this. I'm just keeping track of them. I'm off the budget, I can move on.
No, I mean, we're on the budget. I mean, we're on the, we're on the refinancing. Do you have any, we already did this? Okay, we'll just move to the right, okay? Then I'd like to say something before we get back to your, actually, Hunter, I'm going to let you go first, then I'll pack my comments.
I'll be listening tomorrow night, and, you know, I'll make a final decision, but I don't think anything's changed since what I said earlier.
My position is I think that we should go for additional funds at this point, because we have a very large investment we're going into our product, into our physical plant. When we're investing for something that's going to have a ten to eleven year timeframe to repay, and we're looking for materials that are going to last for twenty to thirty years, I think that we're making an investment in our physical plant, and we're also making an investment to make sure we're not bleeding our budget and our fund balance. When we're looking at our fund balance, and we can get money theoretically at very low cost at this point, I think we should seize the moment. Instead of putting additional stress on the board going forward, while we're still going to have to replace the chillers, replace our AC units, et cetera, for all these buildings, I mean, when we're looking at these items for this, for our project, we're looking at several million dollars, and it's not a couple hundred thousand. Regarding the window expense, I, after a building that's less than fifteen years old, replacing all the windows, to me, is rather shocking, frankly. Do I think we should replace them? Yes, because I don't think it's realistic to have a complete building and say every window in the building can't be opened, when they look very openable. Because as soon as you do that, either you're going to have to come in and put some kind of mechanical device in to prevent opening, or you're going to have to hope that no one goes, opens them, and it has a yolting effect when someone's hits. So that's why at $400,000, when you're looking at the overall program and the fact that we also had looked at this as a major item going into the program, I think we should be expending the cost. So I think that if Ann is able to work with our group there at PFM, and they can come back and make recommendations to her, that seems logical, I think we should be able to mount this, and say we can work with them, and that's why I'm going to, I just think that we want to defend ourselves. We're seeing that every year we eat away at what little, at the money we have in our bank accounts. So instead of having to take a chunk of $4 million dollars in those bank accounts, it's better to finance it, a little extra money every year, than splitting all your resources. But now I know that Mr. Japino would like to reach out and write himself a new statement.
Thank you. Try to be quick. I received an email, or some of the board members received, if it was part of personnel committee, but it was a summary from one of the school nurses, Tammy Hughes, about an event that she attended. And I thought it was really informative. It's kind of cool that somebody went out to an event and, you know, shared back with the board what they learned. But I had a couple of questions related to that. One of them, and here, maybe Dr. Miller, you can answer the questions, is she referred to something called the SHARs report, and one of the recommendations at the event that she was at, the SHARs stands for the School Health Annual Amortement Request System. And one of the notes that she brought back was recommend the school board reviews the SHARs report. Is there anything in there that would be of value that the school board should know about related to the SHARs report, and why would they recommend that it would be worthwhile for the board to review that data?
Probably just to give you an update on our health services, our use of our nursing offices, our use of resources as far as physicals we provide versus physicals that students get themselves, and we're keeping up with all of our mandates and what are the mandates that we're required to give each year. I mean, we could give you a summary. One of our nurses could come in, Tammy could come in actually, and give you a summary of the SHARs report. It would be good information for the board.
Matt, this is a four page letter, so it's pretty fascinating, some of the information that she had, and I'm just going to move on quickly. I'm just going to move on quickly. One of the things that she also talked about was Narcan. Do we have a policy on the use of Narcan? I thought we did, I didn't remember.
We do, yes. Yes, there's a policy we have on Narcan.
Can I, a quick question. Have we ever used Narcan at this school?
No, we haven't.
So, one of the other things had to do with children being entitled to health services at all times under activities related to the school jurisdictions. One of the things that surprised me is, the surprise to me even includes non-P I double A sports and athletic activities that are intramural activities. So, when we do those things, we do have to have a nurse?
We do.
Okay. And we do do that. One of the certified school nursing caseload, best practice is one to 750 students. Standard is currently a one to 1,500 students. What's our caseload in the district?
Our nurses right now run about 1,200 to 1,300.
Per nurse?
Per nurse. We, kind of a situation where our current certified school nurse physicians that we have filled is about 1,200 to 1,300. We've been having a vacant physician that they helped reduce that to four certified school nurses to divide the population, but we have not been able to find the candidate.
But we do have that one person going for her certified school nurse.
She's the third, she's our third person. We have another physician that we are having a difficult time finding.
And how is the record keeping system for students? Do we have like electronic medical record or how does that work?
It's all in our Skyward system. When we do the S H A R S report, everything pulls out of Skyward. It's all recorded in time.
And all nurses, including substitute nurses or whatever, have access to that equally?
Yeah.
Okay. The last thing, and this was more of a request, I hope that the ex-otims of school district will consider utilizing nursing staff by allowing part of a faculty in service day to allow education to staff regarding chronic conditions and emergency care that is needed in a classroom setting. I don't know if that was, if you saw that as a need and if there was some district stance on that, if there was value in the nurses doing those presentations to all of our staff.
I think a lot of it is currently done. Our principals work with their school nurses to get some more state training done. Mr. Campbell had to work in with Audrey, our athletic trainer, stop the bleed is, we're a high percentage of our high school staff is all now training stop the bleed. Our two school nurses, Audrey has trained, so we're going to be spreading out more down to the other schools. Our goal in the district is to have stop the bleed training for everyone over the next few years. And that would accompany other, other training. Even here in this building, we keep updating training on our A E D device and first aid training here every two to three years. We have one of the nurses come over and train our staff here. We use it for state calls.
I'm sorry. And one of the things that we have in our current inservicing is a lot of our teachers are doing the inservicing. We're not going outside anymore, we're going inside. So, we can certainly add that to some of our selections. So, they'd be offered by the nurses or teachers that would like to take it. Thank you.
Are there any other plans you'd like to discuss this evening? I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. I've heard about a safe and very interesting topic.